Lord Mayor, can I advise members that apologies for absence have been received from councillors Paul Brandt, Lawrence Brown, Joanne Calvert, Alison Clark, Dave Cummings, Alfie Hinks, Lisa Gorn, Sam Gorst, Rona Heron, George Nibb, Barry Kushner, Rob McAllister-Bell, Barbara Mace, Andrew Makinsen, Liz Makinsen and Liz Parsons? Are there any further apologies to report?
Councillor Carroll Story, thanks Lord Mayor.
Can I remind members that in the event the fire alarm sounds, to please leave the chamber calmly, after which you will be escorted safely from the building and asked to assemble outside the rear of the town hall? Just a correction, councillor Sam Gorst is in attendance. A guidance note has been circulated and a copy attached to the Lord Mayor's note, setting out precautions and measures to reduce Covid transmission risks at meetings. I would specifically draw members' attention to the guidance and remind everyone present to always follow the one-way system when moving around the chamber and building, to wear masks when moving round or standing, to regularly sanitise using the hand gel provided, and to note that windows are open to ensure ventilation throughout the chamber. Lord Mayor, as members are aware, there are two meetings taking place this evening. I would like to emphasise that these are key meetings held in public, but these are not public meetings. Can I request that everyone present, including the public, treat these meetings accordingly, which will enable the business to be dealt with effectively? The use of social media and filming for reporting proceedings is permitted during council meetings. This does not extend to the filming of members of the public, and anyone wishing to film the proceedings are also particularly directed to the very sensitive issue of filming children without the express permission of their parents.
We were all shocked and deeply saddened at the tragic death of Ava White, and on behalf of the council, extend to her family its sincere condolences at this sad time. Can I therefore ask that we observe a minute's silence in her memory?
Declarations of interest. Lord Mayor, can I remind members and officers present that you are only required to declare at meetings any disclosable pecuniary or prejudicial interests, in which case the member or officer will need to leave the chamber during the consideration of the item? Are there any such declarations?
If we move to item two, Conferal of Civic Recognition of Awards, Freedom of the City and Freedom Role of Association, can I ask Mayor Joanne?
Can I move that in the pursuance of section 249 of the Local Government Act 1972, the civic award of honorary freedom of the city be conferred on the following individuals: Jimmy McGovern, Andrew Devine, 97th victim of the Hillsborough disaster, and the civic award of freedom role of association be conferred on the YMCA Association? Jimmy's nomination is in tribute to his multi-award-winning career, having famously created TV dramas such as Hillsborough, Cracker, The Lakes, The Streets, The Accused, Moving On, and recently in June this year, With Time, starring Stephen Graham and Sean Bean, which was supported by the Liverpool Region Film Production Fund. Jimmy's nomination has unrivaled contribution to British TV, film and theatre over the past 40 years in a wide-ranging career as a writer, co-writer and producer. That also includes the launch of Channel 4 soap, Ruxad, in 1982, the 1994 film Priest, and the 2007 slavery play, King Cotton, which was commissioned for Liverpool's year as European Capital of Culture. He is also cited for placing the pursuit of truth and justice at the heart of his writing, most famously 25 years ago in the 1996 docu-drama Hillsborough. Jimmy's passion to explore faults in society and the legal system has continued throughout his career as portrayed in the BAFTA-nominated 1999 drama Dockers about the Liverpool Dockers strike, and was again on display in the recent drama Anthony, which reimagined the life of murdered black teenager Anthony Walker. As a producer, the former pupil of St Francis Xavier's College and one-time bus conductor and English teacher, is also recognised for generating tens of millions of pounds for Liverpool and the North West of England's film and TV sector. The quality of his body of work has seen Jimmy garner multiple awards, including four BAFTAs, two Edgar's, two international Emmys, a lifetime achievement award from the Royal Television Society. Andrew Devine, 97th victim of the Hillsborough disaster, Andrew sadly passed away aged 55 in July this year due to the complications resulting from life-changing injuries following the Hillsborough football stadium disaster in April 1989. Andrew's name will join the other 96 victims of the tragedy, who were posthumously awarded the city's freedom in September 2016. The City of Liverpool Young Men's Christian Association, YMCA Together, celebrates its 175th birthday in 2021. It was established as a place of hope, light and unquestioned support to the people in our communities who need its help. They have done this instinctively, including throughout both world wars, and they are still working to make sure that everyone has a home of their own, support from people who understand them and skills for a better future. 2020 was the hardest year in the charity's modern history, working through a pandemic to keep the most vulnerable people safe and careful. YMCA Together opens emergency accommodation to bring as many people as possible off the streets. Teams work through uncertainty, turmoil and change, supporting nearly 700 people, saving 28,000 meals and opening a mental health service. Today, YMCA Together provides 1,011,000 bed spaces annually, named the sixth best charity to work for in the UK by Best Companies. It's a key part of Liverpool's history. To be awarded this honour, its 175th year will be a fitting tribute. Is this motion... Sorry.
Is the motion seconded? Councillor Corbett? Do you wish to speak? Okay, thank you. Can I invite councillor Richard Kemp to speak?
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. I won't talk about Jimmy or the YMCA, they are extremely well-known. I just want to ask the council to think for a minute about the sad death of Andrew Devine and why we are commemorating him today in this way. There are those who think that because Hillsborough was a long time ago, it's all past, it doesn't matter, it's in the past, it's history. But Andrew, when he died, reminded me, and I'm sure reminded many of you as well, that that day lives on in the mind of many, many people who were there, and in the families of those who came back, not in the way they went, as Andrew's did, and the families of those that didn't come back at all. Andrew was lucky in that he had a family and friends to support him, and that itself can be a rewarding thing for those families and friends, so it's not all bad. But I just hope that as we think of Andrew and formally accept this motion, that we will remember all those people who still suffer for an event that for them could well have been yesterday. My Lord Mayor, my pleasure in supporting this motion.
Thank you councillor Kemp. Can I invite councillor Steve Radford to speak please? Of course you can. Better to sit down as well, even when we're speaking, if members are happy with that. Do you want to speak now?
If I can get the mic to work, my Lord Mayor. Thank you, my Lord Mayor, and thank you, Steve, for the opportunity. Many, many colleagues know that I'm a survivor of Hillsborough, that I was in the cage, behind the goal, in the Leppings Lane End. And councillor Kemp is entirely right, those memories, those feelings, those emotions, don't go, they fade a bit, but they stay with us. The sense of loss, the sense of injustice, and how proud are we as a city of the campaign that the families carried and carried the fight right across this land to ensure that justice was finally done, and it was a proud day that this city conferred the freedom for the other 96, and I'm proud to have been hearing part of that. When we get challenged, and councillor Kemp's right, you know, it suddenly sharply reminds us that actually there was a 97th victim, who'd been with us all this time, 32 years on. It is right that the people of Liverpool know that we as a city will never, ever stop supporting those who lost loved ones, who struggled and who struggle today, and it's really proud that Andrew Devine can be added to our list as the 97th victim. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor, I know that was hard for you as well, thank you. Can I invite councillor Tom Crown to speak please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The Green Group also support the motion for these honours to be bestowed upon these people. Yeah, and I'd like to also just, you know, obviously it's difficult to follow Peter on this subject, he speaks with such passion about it, but we'd like to echo what he says. I'd also like to pass my condolences to Andrew's parents, Hillary and Stanley, who gave a lovely interview to the BBC and spoke with such pride about their son. I think it's absolutely right that we as a council make it clear that the people of Liverpool will never forget all those people who were unlawfully killed in the Hillsborough disaster, and in the 32 years since the disaster, Andrew's been a well-known presence around Liverpool, and he will now be missed by many people, but partly thanks to this tonight, he will never be forgotten.
Thank you councillor Crown. So we all agreed on that? Yes? Thank you. We'll now move to the ordinary meeting.
Lord Mayor, can I advise members that apologies for absence have been received from councillors Paul Brandt, Lawrence Brown, Joanne Calvert, Alison Clark, Dave Cummings, Alfie Hinks, Lisa Gorn, Rona Heron, George Nibb, Barry Kushner, Rob McAllister-Bell, Barbara Mace, Andrew Makinsen, Liz Makinsen and Liz Parsons? Are there any further apologies to report?
My Lord Mayor, could I ask, as a point of order, a question of the chief executive or our new city solicitor, who is standing next to him and welcome to him? As of eight o'clock last night, I was expecting 12 of my 12 members to be here. Six of them were given health advice today on behalf of themselves, their family or their work colleagues, that they should not come. I wonder if there are two things that we can do. Is it possible to record in the absences those people who wanted to be here but were prevented because of pandemic reasons? And secondly, given the very large number of councillors who aren't here, whether it be possible for either the chief executive or the mayor to write to the Prime Minister and say, "We need to go back for reasons of health and safety until we're absolutely sure we can meet again properly as a council to hybrid meetings so that everyone can attend"?
I'd second that motion, Lord Mayor.
In terms of that instruction from council, I'm perfectly happy to take that, but I do think you need to check that members agree with that. Lord Mayor, I'll answer the first question then.
Would members like us to do that? Yep, agreed.
Great, thank you, Lord Mayor. In terms of the first matter councillor Kemp raised, we're perfectly happy to record that in the minutes and understand the issue. Lord Mayor, can I remind members that you are only required to declare at meetings any disclosable pecuniary or prejudicial interests, in which case the member will need to leave the chamber during consideration of the item? Are there any such declarations?
Can I move that the minutes of the city council meeting held on the 22nd of September 2021 be approved? Is that agreed? Thank you. Councillor Corbett?
I'm sorry, my name is in twice, it's down as apologies, and it also has me as speaking right at the start of the meeting, so just take out, I wasn't there.
We'll correct that. Suspension of standing orders. As members will be aware, Constitutional Issues Committee recently agreed a revised format for full council meetings until May next year. The agenda before us tonight has been constructed in accordance with that decision. In order to facilitate this and in accordance with standing order 30, it is proposed that relevant procedural standing orders be suspended for the duration of this meeting to enable the efficient conduct of business. Is that agreed? Thank you.
The report of the recent by-elections. Lord Mayor, can I draw members' attention to the results of three by-elections held on the 18th of November 2021 in respect of the vacant seats for Anfield, Clubmoor and Kirkdale wards? The results of each by-election are set out in the agenda papers.
Councillor Radford?
Just a technical query, but I thought the candidate with the least votes in Kirkdale was the Liberal Democrat Stop Brexit candidate, so I didn't know if we would be recording their full contribution inscription rather than a summary of it.
Councillor?
That was not the official description on the ballot paper. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Be nice if we could all behave, wouldn't it? On behalf of full council, can I welcome the following new members to the city council: councillor Dave Hanratty for Kirkdale Ward, councillor Tricia O'Brien for Anfield Ward, and councillor Matthew Smyer for Clubmoor Ward. You are really welcome. Welcome to the chamber. Can I advise, no petitions or statements have been received? Item five, urgent key executive decisions taken in the last cycle? Can I advise members that as advised by Mayor Joanne Anderson, there have been no urgent key executive decisions taken in the last cycle? Item six, Gambling Act 2005 Draft Statement of Principles, Safety Plan 21 to 24. Can I invite councillor Christine Banks to move the recommendation on this item?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Under the Gambling Act 2005, the councillor's licence authority is obliged every three years to publish its statement of principles. The committee recommends to the city council that the draft statement of principles 2022/25 appeared in the report, add appendix two to be approved and published to take effect from the 31st of January 2022. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Malcolm Kelly has indicated that he wishes to comment on the proposals.
Yeah, sorry, Lord Mayor, no, we support the recommendation, there's nothing else I want to add to that, thank you.
Thank you councillor. Do any further members wish to speak on this item? No indications. We'll now move to the vote. Is the recommendation agreed? Excellent. Item seven, constitutional issues. Can I invite councillor Ruth Bennett to move the recommendations on this item?
Yep. Can I move that items one to six as outlined in the Lord Mayor's note be approved?
Councillor Chris Brown has indicated that he wishes to comment on the proposals.
No comment, Lord Mayor.
This is a strange meeting. Do any further members wish to speak on this item? No one indicating? We'll now move to the vote, is the recommendation... Oh, sorry, councillor Murray.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Just on page 92, I note for Liverpool Council of Education, it says Chair of Select Committee and One Labour, but we've only got Harry Doyle's name as Chair of the Select Committee, my name should be there as well.
We'll look into that for you, councillor Murray. Any further members wish to speak on this item? We'll move to the vote then. Is the recommendation agreed? Item eight, review of political proportions on committees 2021 to 22. Can I refer members to the supplementary agenda as circulated, which contains an updated report on this matter? I now invite councillor Ruth Bennett to move the recommendations on this item.
Okay, can I move that the political composition of the city council as of the 8th of December 21 be noted and endorsed? The decision of full council at its AGM of the 26th of May 2021, insofar as the application of proportionality rules for certain committees were suspended, be reaffirmed. The allocation of seats to the Labour group under proportionality rules be reduced by two, from 53 to 51, with a result of reduction in the Labour allocation on the Environment Regulatory Committee from seven to five, and subject to there being no dissent, approval be granted to extend full council's previous decision on the suspension of political proportion rules to include the Environmental Regulatory Committee, and in such case, there is two results from vacancies be offered to the three independent councillors.
Thank you councillor. Any members to speak? Steve Radford, I've got you first.
My Lord Mayor, can you just clarify? In the past, this council has been inconsistent in its approach to people who don't belong to a political group. I've always believed that everybody should have equal and individual rights to represent their residents on all the committees. Can you give us a little clarification? Will the independent members be given an extra opportunity to serve on committees? Because if not, I warn principle, vote against. I'm just asking for clarity on that, because what I'm reading and what I'm hearing don't sound the same, and I mean that with respect.
It doesn't apply to the select committees, this applies to the environmental regulatory committees. The independent councillors themselves don't form a political group?
I think they understand the councils don't form a political group, but it has been the opportunity of this council to allow some independent members equal and equitable and individual rights to be represented on committees by our discretion. Because something isn't enshrined doesn't mean it's morally defendable. If you're not...
Councillor Radford? I will bring the chief exec in now, because we don't want this discussion to carry on. Oh, I'd like it to carry on, but there's a time and a place, I mean. So let's get a response to you now.
Wonder who run the council?
Lord Mayor, quite simply, the allocation's done in line with political proportionality, which is on the numbers in each group, and the independent members currently don't form a group.
I've read that, and I didn't really need the chief executive to reread it, but it's the political decision whether we allow individual members, which this council can give...
Councillor Radford? You've had your response and we're moving on.
Because they don't belong to a political group, and whether the chief executive believes that's within the legal framework is required is not the case. It's a facility we can do. I appreciate the advice, they don't form a political group, but that does not debar us giving them equal and individual rights to serve on the council committee. It is a liberal principle.
Councillor Radford, I will bring in councillor Bennett for a response again. Councillor Bennett?
Councillor Radford will be aware that this council suspends standing orders to allow opposition representation on all select committees, that according to the proportionality rules, we don't have to have. In this, no, we don't. And in this case, what we do is we suspend those standing orders to allow representation from opposition groups more than what their seats allow. In this case, independent members don't form a separate political group. Any member is allowed to attend any select committee they wish, doesn't mean that they have to be a member of it, so it's not as if members are banned from attending it. But in themselves, the independent members don't form a political group at this stage.
Right, we're moving on with this now, councillor Radford. We're moving to the vote, is the recommendation... No. No councillor Radford, we're moving to the vote. Is the recommendation agreed? Can I have a show of hands on that please? Agreed by the vast majority. Move on. Item nine. We can record your vote against. Yeah? You can, a show of hands for those who are voting against. Five voting against. Five voting against. Thank you. Item nine, review of constitution. Can I invite councillor Abdul Qadir to move the recommendation on this item?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As members will be aware, we have established a cross-party working group to oversee the review of the constitution. The report by the Centre of Governance and Scrutiny outlines the framework under which the review will be undertaken. Further details will be provided at the working group at the next meeting. Can I therefore move that the work undertaken to date is noted? And the scope and methodology and framework for the progress of the review be noted and endorsed?
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Richard Kemp?
My Lord Mayor, there are a number of items before us today which are taking further the processes of change, which began in the summer of 2018 with the arrival of Tony Reeves, and have been accelerated since the former mayor left us just over a year ago. And Max Callaghan left us with his succinct report on the structural failings within the council. Today, we have a number of debates, all of which are important, but if taken separately, have the danger of confusing and overwhelming the system and leaving us at best no worse off, but at worst leave us worse off than we were before the work started. We believe that there are systemic problems with the direction set by the government following on from Callaghan and with the commissioner system, which has been set up to deliver the government's objectives. The government has no understanding of the complex governance issues of a core city because nationally, they have few councillors in core cities. Max Callaghan, although delivering a good report, had never served in a core city, and none of his inspectors had elected experience. The commissioner's team have little experience of big city governance and again have no one amongst their ranks with experience as an elected member. The Lib Dem group believe there are three key elements which will need to be addressed and which we will deal with in three debates today. Delivering what the people of Liverpool have made clear that they want, creating a strong governance system whereby councillors can act as a bridge between the people, organisations and businesses of the city, and ensure that the people's priorities get delivered. And lastly, creating a strong and disciplined management team to ensure that people's priorities can be delivered in a timely and cost-effective way. This I'm dealing with today is the governance system, and we have concerns, although we'll support what the cabinet member has said. Firstly, it doesn't just matter what the constitution says, although that's important. The real problem with our current constitution is the way that it's written. Gobbledegoop and legalese that most people, including most councillors, just cannot understand. Secondly, it cannot address the hidden things behind which a constitution must work. Perhaps we can see most clearly, not in this chamber, but in the United States at the moment. And that is the cultural behaviour of people and especially elected members to behave openly and decently at all times, which can be summarised as the Nolan Principles. We have seen in recent behaviour from some members at the planning and neighbourhood committees that good governance is just not in some people's hearts. Lastly, it needs to address the way the executive, both cabinet and senior officers, deliver what the council asks them to. Our belief is that we need to make major changes in the way that we scrutinise service delivery. And in fact, that is part of the governance review which the constitutional review, which the cabinet member refers to. But we're nowhere near deciding what that will be because that will depend on discussions within the city plan and the council plan. So we're in danger of producing in the short term a constitution which in the medium term will need to be capable of major revision. So, my Lord Mayor, as I said, we do support this today, but we lay down some markers that there are too many plans, that they're not necessarily coordinated, and it isn't the council's fault. I'm not blaming the Labour Party. I'm not blaming the officers. It's the way the directions to this council have been framed and which we have no alternative other than to follow. Thank you, my lord.
Thanks, councillor Kemp. Do any further members wish to speak on this item? Abdul?
Yeah, just a reply. I think some of the things that councillor Kemp is talking about is something for the committee to look into, and that's why it's a cross-party and your voices will be heard on that one. So I don't want to be going into the details of it. In terms of the direction, it is clear we've committed to working with the commissioners on this journey as an authority and with senior management. So I don't think it's the time or the place now to talk about that either. I'm glad that you agree on the principles of it. I'm agreed, and I look forward to working with you and other elected members on this because what we believe in is that this constitution has to be a living, breathing, working document, under review constantly as well. So where you're saying that it's a short term, there will be elements of it that will have to be reviewed constantly anyway, and that is something that we can take out up in the meetings. But thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. We'll now move to the vote. Is the recommendation agreed? Item 10, appointment of external auditors for financial years 23, 24 to 27, 28. Can I invite councillor Chris Brown to move the recommendation on this item?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The recommendation I'm moving today relates, as you said, to the appointment process of our external auditors for years 23, 24 to 27, 28, and is set out on pages 126 to 137 of your Agenda PAC. The recommendation of the Audit Committee in our 2nd of November meeting was the approval be granted to accept the invitation by public sector auditor appointments limited to opt into the sector-led arrangement for the appointment of external auditors for five financial years with immediate effect. It's worth pointing out, this is not just the opinion of officers and councillors, but also our new independent advisers. We'd heard earlier in the constitutional makeup, Stephen Gregory and Ramon Johnson, who offer a vast range of external experience. I'm happy to take comments and questions in relation to this item, but what I would say to members is please try and keep it to the appointment process only. I may find it sensitive to answer questions through our current arrangement. With your permission, Lord Mayor, if I'm unable to answer any questions here on the floor, I will write to that individual member and I will publish that response in the minutes, appended to the minutes for transparency purposes. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Councillor Richard Kemp indicated he wants to speak.
Well, it's actually a question, my Lord Mayor. Without seeking in any way to establish whether such a move is desirable, would the Chair of Audit tell us if the tendering process currently being embarked upon, which he's recommending to us today, could lead to the appointment of a new external auditor to the council? And at what stage in the process, either now or during the subsequent pooling stage of the process, will the council, under terms of strict confidentiality, make its opinions known on this matter to the PSAA?
Thank you, councillor Kemp, for that question. In short answer, yes, we can appoint a new external auditor. I think it's worth pointing out at this stage that the current auditor, Grant Thornton, for the last financial year 2020, 2021, estimated cost was £248,612 for the services. There is some risk if we are moving to the new appointment that external audit fee levels will increase as contracts end at that time and as we go into 2023. In relation to the second point, the timescale is in the report, but I can provide you a fuller answer in writing as part of this meeting. If that's okay.
Thank you, councillor. Any further members wish to speak on this item? We'll now move to the vote. Is the recommendation agreed? Thank you. Item 11, changes to committee membership. Can I invite councillors Ruth Bennett and then Malcolm Kelly to move the recommendations on this item?
Can I move that the changes in committee memberships as attached to this note at appendix A be approved insofar as these relate to the Labour Group?
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Can I move that the changes in committee membership as attached in appendix A be approved insofar as these relate to the Liberal Democrat Group?
Is the recommendation agreed? Item 12, nomination of local authority representative governors. Can I invite councillor Tom Logan to move the recommendation on this item?
Thank you. You may remember at the previous council meeting, I spoke about improving the diversity of boards of governors of our schools. But I'm happy to report that we've begun a recruitment drive and we've begun induction meetings for prospective governors, and we'll be looking to make appointments on the back of this at future council meetings. And I recommend, I support this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any further members wish to speak on this item? Sorry, councillor Kemp. Would that be you putting your hand up and saying, "I'd like to speak"? Feel free to stand in.
Ah, there we are. I've got it on. My Lord Mayor, this is the second council meeting in a row where the old precedents, which I believe were good precedents, have broken down in that for many, many years and until very recently, ward members were consulted on the appointment of local authority representatives within this ward. And that was true of all members of the council and all wards. In our case, you're putting forward a proposal which relates to Booker Avenue School, which is in Churchward, where first of all, we have a councillor who is interested in standing. Councillor Ismael Kinsler, our education spokesperson, was a full-time teacher for 22 years. And we have other people in the ward committed to a range of community organisations in that area who we know are standing, sorry, are interested in standing for these positions. In these circumstances, we believe that it's important for all elected members that they should be consulted in advance on appointments to schools within their ward, as that precedent always was. So I would ask you to withdraw this item today and in future, consult ward members on appointments to schools within their wards.
Tom, would you like to respond? Okay. Any other speakers on this item? Is the recommendation agreed? Okay. Those in favour? Those against? Any abstentions? No, so the recommendation is carried. Item 13, Mayor of Liverpool, Joanne Anderson, to present any announcements and updates?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I wanted to talk about the incident in the Liverpool Women's Hospital, first of all. I want to thank everyone who provided support to the city following the incident at the Women's Hospital in November. I was so impressed by all the key agencies' work together, how they had clarity on their roles and how they supported each other. And I want to thank the staff and faith groups and our Ward councillors in Kensington and Greenbank, who worked closely with our Safer Cities team to keep residents informed while police investigations were undertaken. We had a minute's silence earlier as we're all truly horrified by the murder of Ava White in our city. It was hard-worn to see so many people come out and attend the vigil and stand in solidarity with their family. As you're all aware, tackling violence against women and girls is an absolute priority for my administration, and I have appointed councillor Sarah Doyle as Assistant Mayor to support me with our strategy to improve support for victims and their families. I know many of you were pleased to hear last week that the government has finally approved a new landlord licensing scheme for Liverpool. It's an understatement to say we have missed our proactive powers, our targeted enforcement action, and working with landlords to bring properties back into a safe and well-managed state. We can now look forward to renewing and strengthening our partnership approach to drive forward the much-needed changes in our neighbourhoods. And quite simply, this scheme enables the council to improve the life chances of our citizens and residents and makes a real difference all because their home is safe, warm and well-managed. Finally, I'd like to say this weekend, our city will be in the international spotlight as G7 Foreign and Development Ministers meet at the Museum of Liverpool. We are a fit and choice given our cultural significance, musical importance and sporting greatness, which attracts visitors from around the world, as well as our scientific and architectural innovation. It's an incredible opportunity to showcase our amazing city to the G7 leaders as well as the international media, who will be here to report on the event. I will be promoting Liverpool's global heritage, our international outlook and ties, and showing what a fantastic world city we are. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Joanne. Any questions for the mayor? Tom?
Thank you for those announcements, Mayor. And I just also want to express my horror at the murder of Ava White. It was devastating to hear that news. And the Green Party, support your work to tackle the issue of violence against women in the city. And we totally give our full support for any work in the city on that topic. On the visit of the G7 to Liverpool, you'll be meeting with them, you'll be interacting with them, I presume, and talking up Liverpool. Obviously, these are the seven most industrialised countries in the world, probably responsible for the vast majority of carbon emissions historically that have taken place and probably still to this day responsible for the majority. So will you be raising the issue of the climate crisis with them and pushing for more funding and more action to address greenhouse gas emissions?
Well, I'm a ten-to-one event for an hour with a three-minute speech, so I'm not quite sure I would address it in that way. But I have put out a press release today with Core Cities about investment for cities in the green agenda, targeting G7 leaders and asking them to stick to their commitments that have been made.
Councillor Kemp?
My Lord Mayor, could I just thank the mayor for her statement, but just refer briefly to the G7 arrangements? I was absolutely delighted when I found this was coming for the reasons she has articulated. and I don't demur from that. But what does concern me is, given the current thoughts on the pandemic, are we going to go back to the situation back in March last year, when lots of people came in from a country and actually caused a big uptick in virus in this city? So could I seek some assurances that our own public health team are heavily involved in making all arrangements for this to keep not only the delegates but ourselves safe? But could I just then extend that a little to say, I understand that Mr Johnson is making a presentation at six o'clock about Plan B. I'm very concerned that people in this city are being forced to go into offices needlessly and that part of Plan B might, just might be, to recommend that people don't go into offices and we've seen the elaborate arrangements we've had today. Would she, Camilla Mancubardi, the chief executive and Matt Ashton, consider whether or not now is the time to make a further strengthening of announcements in the way we did last year about how employers and employees could be safe in their work and stop spreading the virus to themselves, to each other and to the rest of the community?
Councillor Lake?
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Just to respond on behalf of the mayor to councillor Kemp's question, the public health team have been heavily involved in any events that are going ahead in the city. The guidance that's currently published is in accordance with what the legislation allows. However, the Liverpool Health Protection Board has also issued a statement around two months ago encouraging businesses that if their employees can work from home, then they should do, regardless of what national legislation is, which is why we can't mandate it, but we can recommend that. So all I will say is that the advice will be updated as and when the legal, the legal sort of backing comes in there, but we'll continue to recommend over and above to make sure that everyone's safe in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any further questions for Mayor Joanne? Okay, thank you. We'll move on. Part two, it's the key debates. A period of 90 minutes has been allocated for key debates for this part of the meeting, up to 45 minutes for each of the two debate items. To assist with the orderly conduct of proceedings relating to the first key debate, can I ask if there are any members wishing to speak to the motion or the two amendments, but who are not listed on the notes? If so, please raise your hand now and when asked clearly to indicate which element you wish to speak on. I will then be able to call you in turn at the appropriate point, subject to there being time available. Item 14, warding pattern submission to the Local Government Boundary Commission for England. Key debate and report. Can I invite councillor Nick Small as a member of the Cross Party Working Group to introduce the report and move the recommendation?
I couldn't work out how to say it. It's been a long time since I've been here. I want to move this and introduce it on behalf of the Cross Party Working Group. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the other members of the Cross Party Working Group, councillors Ruth Bennett, Laura Robertson Collins, Pat Maloney, Steve Radford and Tom Crown, and there's been some others who've been involved in earlier stages of this process, and also to the officers who've supported this, Mike Jones, Chris Walsh, Ian Williams, Richard Jones and colleagues from planning and communities who've done a lot of work, a lot of very detailed work behind the scenes in putting this report together and previous reports together. This, of course, is a process that has been going on for about 18 months now and there's been a lot of support from officers, so I want to place that on record today. The Labour Group, as we've said previously, has accepted in full the findings and the recommendations of the Calla Report. We've committed to working constructively in partnership with the commissioners on a journey of improvement to benefit residents for this city council. Some of those recommendations involve the submission to the Boundary Commission. At the first stage, there was a recommendation that we should support a small reduction in the number of councillors, which we did at stage one from 90 to 85, and that was accepted by the Local Government Boundary Commission. And at this stage, there's a recommendation that the council's submission should be done on a predominantly single-member ward basis and agreed with the commissioners. And in the recommendation that we are discussing tonight, that I'm moving shortly, we have a predominantly single-member ward scheme comprising of 75 single-member wards and five two-member wards, and that has been approved by the commissioners. Lord Mayor, the starting point for this, after the Calla Report, was really around the move away from electing the council by thirds, so that we elect the council going forward from 2023 by every four years and we have all-out elections. The recommendation, and I think there's probably unanimous support in this chamber for that, was because if we're on that journey of improvement, we need to move away from annual elections and we need to focus on what's best for our residents, on improving what we do as a council. And a move away from election by thirds will allow us to do that. That was the starting point and I think the most important recommendation from Calla. Leading on from that, because we're not having a council elected by thirds, we don't have, and this is what the law says, we don't have to have three-member wards anymore. I think that gives us an opportunity to elect the council in future with a mixed system where we have different-sized wards that allows us better to reflect those natural communities. Having a system where you have all three-member wards means, in some cases, you're putting communities together, you're having artificial constructions of wards that don't always reflect those natural communities. And of course, the statutory criteria, there's three things that we look at on that, one of which is natural communities, one is efficient local government and one is electoral equality. I think that we have an opportunity and I hope that that's reflected within the report that we are discussing tonight, to have something that gives us an opportunity to look at different ways of doing things, that gives us a way of having better reflect in those communities and having a more efficient local government. I think the report that the city council is discussing tonight meets those three statutory criteria, but I think that we can do things better and I think that's why the Labour Group and perhaps other groups and other members of the public, but the Labour Group are going to submit, in addition to the city council submission that we're going to vote for tonight, we're going to submit an alternative submission, as the Liverpool Labour Group, which we think better meets those three statutory criteria, better reflects local communities, better delivers efficient local government and better delivers electoral equality. And that submission will be based on a scheme of seven three-member wards, 24 two-member wards and 17 single-member wards, and we think that that will better meet that statutory criteria. So we are going to vote for this, we're going to vote for this report tonight because we want to work constructively with the commissioners. We want to work in a way that the council can be on that journey of improvement and that we can do that. And we'll be submitting our own report as a Labour Group, our own recommendation as a Labour Group, and we hope that the Boundary Commission, an independent body, will be able to consider that with equal weight, with every other submission that's made, including by members of the public, and make a decision to do what's right by the people of Liverpool, to have a system of electing councillors in the future that better delivers those three statutory criteria. So, Lord Mayor, can I move the three recommendations contained in A, B and C in the Lord Mayor's note tonight?
Thank you, councillor Small. We'll now deal with the two amendments. First amendment, can I invite councillor Richard Kemp to move the amendment standing in his name?
No, I'm seconded.
Oh, sorry. Councillor Maloney?
Thanks, Lord Mayor. I'm going to defy convention a little bit by mentioning an officer, but I think it's entirely warranted in these circumstances and that officer's Mike Jones. And Mike has performed a nearly impossible task with totally inadequate resources and I think in the circumstances, he's done a very fine job and I think that should be recognised by this council. That's enough clapping, you're taking my time away. If I can say, there's a number of problems I have with this whole process. The timescale has been ridiculous when you look at what this normally is. I think we've had the councillors being forced to agree this because of the Calla Report and the fact that the commissioners have got to okay the proposal. And essentially, what we've got is a reduction in the number of councillors and the imposition of predominantly single-member wards. And I take cognisance of councillor Small's comments about the Labour Party's submission in terms of more multi-member wards. I've shut myself up there. I would say that I do not agree that moving from election by thirds to all-ups every fourth year is a good thing. It will not improve accountability, it will reduce it, and I think it will have a number of other detrimental effects. Now, if we look at why we're in this situation, it's because the council has failed. Yes, it has failed, but the greater failure has been that of the conservative merle model. And if we look at the Calla Report, there's been absolutely no comment about this and no comment, no suggestions about improvements of the merle model. And if we look where the last merle actually set up a merle scrutiny committee and when it didn't suit, he scrapped it. Well, scrutiny that's controlled by the person who's being scrutinised is not proper scrutiny. Yet there's no proposal to reform the merle system in the Calla Report, and I think that's a gross omission. And what we're actually seeing here is as a scapegoating of this council because largely the failings of the merle system. This in itself is a part of a sustained and continuing attack and dismantling of local democracy. We've seen over recent years a number of ways this has been done, and in fact, only in the last few months, we've seen the removal of councillors from boards of council-owned companies. So elected repres-
Councillor Maloney, can I ask you to bring it to a close?
Thanks, Lord Mayor. And we've seen lots of other things like the academyisation of schools, which is removing democratic accountability. My last point is, Labour Party proposed to profess to oppose conservative governments, but in reality, their support for the first past the post voting system gives the Conservative Party majorities in the House of Commons on a minority of votes, and you're enabling the Conservatives to do what they're doing, and that's atrocious. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Maloney, the round of applause. Sort of ruined your little speech there, but never mind. Councillor Kemp, are you second in this and are you speaking?
Fully. There we go. My lord mayor, I could talk about all sorts of things here, but the first thing, the only thing I really want to emphasise is the absolute naivety of thinking that a four-yearly election system brings better government and consistency and the opportunity to focus on the long-term problems within a council. On average, where there are four-yearly elections, 45% of elected members leave the council at those elections either by choice or because they are overturned by the electorate in their wards. That is a huge shock to council after council under those circumstances, as entirely new teams have to take office with little practical experience, even if the political control of that council doesn't change, and even more so when it does. The idea that controlling parties don't try to game the system to their own advantage, whatever that system might be, is frankly naive. I'm helping in a council where change did control, did change control after a four-yearly election this year. There were a whole stack of motions ready to go before council in June and July, some of which had been deferred for two years because they didn't want to take key and big decisions before those four-yearly elections. We all do that to a little bit within the system here, but under a four-year system, too many political administrations of too many types defer big decisions to get them past the electoral hurdle. That's what can happen in these systems under Labour, Tory or Liberal Democrat control, and it would be ridiculous to assume that that isn't a potential threat and possibility in this city based on the national experience over many years of four-yearly elections.
Thank you, councillor. We'll now move to the vote on the first amendment. Those in favour? Any abstentions? Yeah, four, it's 13 against 48, no abstentions, so it's lost. We'll now take the second amendment. Can I invite councillor Steve Radford to move the amendment standing in his name for up to three minutes, please?
Yeah, thank you, my lord mayor. Can I concur with Nick's opening remarks about the contribution of committee members and the staff? And I think it was probably fair to say it was done with a degree of good humour as well, which rose to the occasion, on a few occasions. Can I say to Nick, if the Labour Group are making a separate submission- Can I say to Nick, if the Labour Group are making a separate submission, we would constructively look at that, and it may be beneficial if more than one party supported a generic submission. It might carry more impact than different parties putting slightly different things for sake. I'd be open-minded to discuss that. But can I say to the Labour Group, what you're being asked to do today is actually not honest, and it's not an accurate reflection of what you've just said. Because if you support the recommendations listed on page 160, you are saying that the member ward pattern with intention of increasing accountability in electorate is the 85 predominant members. You're actually saying, today you agree with the proposals being an improvement on public engagement, while in the debate, you're saying, we don't agree, we're going to see something later. It's almost schizophrenic, if I can use that expression. It's not coherent. You're saying two different things to different audiences. And I beg you to really think, how credible will a submission be of saying the Boundary Commission review is not going to improve things, and you want to do something different, when in this chamber today, you're going to have your members whipped to support something you think is inadequate? I just ask you to consider that. I will say one thing further from our point of view, which I know you may disagree with, and I respect that. I can't understand why the Lib Dems at the last occasion voted against it. But if we really wanted to open up a mayoral cabinet system and make it more open to scrutiny, then which has worked in Scotland, it's worked in Wales, and it's worked in the London Assembly, is to have some form of proportional representation. And I know we can debate, I think there are valid arguments for ATV and additional member systems used in Germany and London Assembly. I wouldn't go to the wall on that. But the principle of having every vote counts wherever you live in the city, and there's no safe seats, is inherently far more democratic and far more going to engage the public. And that's why we're going to move the amendment as a statement of principle. We are not in any way criticising the great efforts of the committee. We also want to say quite honestly, we know why the boundary review proposal being put today is the least worst scenario we think we could have got with. And I get that, Nick. You made that case very well at the council.
Councillor, can you bring that to the close now?
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. We are making a statement of principle. If we want to open up the political system and stop abuse and have public engagement, the way forward is not single-member wards, it's proportional representation. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Is the second amendment seconded? Thank you, councillor Mitchell. Do you want to speak?
Fantastic. I'll be very, very quick, although I have to say, I have been greatly distracted by councillor Maloney's rakish eye patch and members putting on more and more clothes as the evening seems to have got colder. We may need to issue tartan blankets for the next meeting, I don't know. Listen, Nick, you know I respect the work you've done, but your argument is utterly absurd. Is there a member in this chamber that actually believes in the principle of single-member wards? Do you want to put your hands up? I don't see many hands. It's absurd. If this is being imposed on us, which it is, why don't we say, this is what we believe? We passed a motion in this chamber, I don't know, 14, 15 months ago, saying what we thought. Why don't we say, this is what we thought then, it's what we believe now, and say, if you want to impose it, listen, good people of Liverpool, we don't agree, but it's been imposed by the government. Let's call it on it is. It's absurd. Objectory, rejecter, support this motion and let them impose their will. It is not, and it's already been shown, irrespective of how the Labour Group will vote tonight, it is not the will of this chamber to go to single-member wards, and that's a fact. Thank you, my...
Thank you, councillor. I've got councillor Nichols, did you want to speak at this time?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It was just in reference to councillor Radford's comment about schizophrenic, and I think it's a bit disrespectful, because I'm not sure if councillor Radford has ever been a schizophrenic, but in terms of respect for those who are actually schizophrenic and their experience, so while this debate, and there are lots of passion, I think he should refrain from using mental health diagnoses.
I would like to withdraw the comment and apologise if it was taken in the wrong way it was meant.
Councillor Nichols, thanks for saying that. Actually, councillor Radford, I was going to have a word with you after the meeting because I'm offended as well. But Natalie has dealt with it, and thank you, Natalie. I've also got councillor Sarah Doyle.
Just to come back on councillor Mitchell's point, to put it very, very simply, we're voting on it because we do not welcome any opportunity which would take away our voice or our right to have a say on a model going forward. And that is why we are voting on it, because we do not want the decision to be taken away from us. I hope that's clear.
Councillor Mitchell, through the chair, and you're not getting a chance. We are now moving to the votes. Those in favour of the second amendment? Are there any abstentions? The result of the vote is it's lost. There were 414, 47 against, and no abstentions. We now turn to speakers on the substantive motion. I will call out in turn the names of those members who earlier indicated that they wished to speak, subject to sufficient time being available. Each will have up to three minutes. I have Tom Crown.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So when the mayor of Liverpool, along with senior council officers, is arrested, and the government has to send in commissioners to oversee key council functions, it is clear that something within our local democracy has to change. And as a long-term supporter of electoral reform, I would certainly support moves to make our local democracy perform better and be more responsive. Perhaps we could introduce proportional representation, so the make-up of council reflects the outcome of elections more accurately. We should look at ways to promote better cross-party working, distribute decision-making more equally among elected members, and find ways to drive up public participation in elections and in between. But unfortunately, what we have had imposed on us, for reasons which still remain unclear, is a system which does nothing to address those issues and could lead to less diversity in our local politics. There's some groups such as young people, women, less well-off people are put off being the sole councillor and ward due to the lack of support they'd have if they needed time off, for example. So I completely disagree with these changes that have been forced upon us by the Secretary of State. Nonetheless, my chance to embarrass Mike, I do want to extend my thanks to Mike Jones and all the other council officers who did go beyond the call of duty to ensure that all political parties and the public were involved in the process of drawing up these boundaries, all within a very challenging timescale. So a genuine effort has been made to make the submission meet the criteria within this compressed timescale. However, it's been forced upon the council, and it's against democratic principles that we should have to adopt this system, despite it not being a good fit for Liverpool. The Greens will be submitting their own submission with amendments directly to the Boundary Commission, but we're not able to vote with this motion because it does not align with our beliefs about democracy. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Nick Small, do you wish to reply?
Not really got a lot to say, but obviously, when we voted down the amendments, we want to make this submission today. I think it's the best submission that's on the table. We've agreed it with the commissioners, there's a lot of work that's gone on behind the scenes on it, and I think we can have better submissions, and I think the groups need to be submitting those as political groups. But this is the best submission that we can make as a council, and I hope that members support it tonight.
Thank you, councillor Small. Thank you. How many people support that?
Councillor Banks? Barrington? Lila Bennett? Ruth Bennett? Berry? Brant? Chris Brown? Lawrence Brown? Byrne? Calvert? Cardwell? Clark? Klein? Coleman? Conception? Connor? Corbett? Crofts? Crown? Cummings? Delahuntie Keigho? Didsbury? Harry Doyle? Sarah Doyle? Dunn? Gawn? Gibbons? Roy Gladden? Rose Gladden? Ghost? Hanratty? Hanson? Harvey? Hayden? Herren? Hinks? Inigan? Hurley? Juarez? Kelly? Kemp? Key? Nib? Knight? Kushner? Billy Lake? Fraser Lake? Lovell? Logan? Mace? Andrew Makinson? Liz Makinson? Marret? McAllister Bell? McIntyre? Melia? Mitchell? Maloney? Morton? Mumbi? Murray? Nicholas? O'Brien? O'Byrne? Parsons? Pitchers? Prince? Kadir? Radford? Roberts? Robertson-Collins? Robinson? Brotherey? Shortall? Simmich? Simon? Small? Smead? Smith? Story? Sung? Thomas? Thompson? Toolen? Tormy? Walker? Walton? Wood?
The result is 48 for, 14 against, no abstentions, so it was carried. Thank you. We now turn to two interlinked items, numbers 15 and 16 on the agenda. Both items relate to the strategic improvement plan. I propose that we take this together. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
To assist with the orderly conduct of proceedings relating to this second key debate, can I ask if there are any members wishing to speak but who are not listed on the notes? To please now raise your hand. I will then call you in turn at the appropriate point during debates. Item 15, Strategic Improvement Plan Report and Key Debates, motion by Mayor Joanne. Can I invite Mayor Joanne to move the motion standing in her name and the associated recommendation relating to the report on the strategic improvement plan, which is set out on pages 207 to 241 of the agenda?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We're still in the early stages of our improvement journey, and I know it will take some time for people to experience some of the changes we are introducing. But we've made significant progress and have stabilised the council following a turbulent 12 months. Some improvements we have made to date include a restructure of the senior management, with key posts such as Monitoring Officer and Chief Operations Officer being filled, our scrutiny process has been strengthened, with independent professionals being appointed to the Order Committee and other key committees. The well-publicised issues with our highways and regeneration teams are being tackled head-on, and there's lots of support for staff to embed and change in culture so they feel empowered to speak out and not afraid to do so. There are big changes underway around how we consult, engage and listen to people. We are not in an administration that imposes things on people. I know that we are all committed to making the necessary improvements we need. I'd like to thank members for taking part in the recent member development training programme. I know how hard it is to fit in training programme on top of your councillor work and often employment as well. Going forward, our commitment to work with the commissioners to support our staff and to deliver an improved service to our residents is unwavering. Delivering on in our improvements will continue to be the number one priority of my leadership. Delivering on our improvements will continue to be the number one priority of my leadership, and we will work tirelessly so that our city can move past this chapter to a better future. Can I move that the Strategic Improvement Plan be approved? It be noted that the Oversight and Assurance Boards will consider and approve the report on the 15th of December, and the motion standing in my name be endorsed.
Thank you, Mayor Joanne. Is the motion seconded? Thank you, councillor Corbett. Do you want to speak on that? We've now got two speakers on the substantive motion, and that's... No, we've got three. I've got councillor Chris Brown.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I actually hadn't planned to speak, although it is in the Lord Mayor's note. I guess first of all, thank you to the mayor for mentioning the improvement in our scrutiny process and the appointment of our independent members, but also thanks to the Commissioners for commending the impact of a Liberal Democrat Chair of a committee and what improvement that makes in relation to scrutiny, and that is noted within their first report. I think we've already touched on some of this already, is that a lot of this can't be just lip service and just responding to the Best Value Inspection Report. This is going to take a long time to embed the culture change that's required within this organisation. And I think that we've all got to have our hearts in it, and I think councillor Kemp did touch on that earlier when he mentioned about the standards of some members in relation to scrutiny. So I guess what I would say is that we have got a million plans to get through this improvement plan and different strategies, but we've really ultimately got to believe in it. It's got to be extended not just through councillors but for officers as well, and I hope that we would do so. So I will leave it there, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Radford?
My Lord Mayor, can I say on behalf of the Liberal Party Group, we have traditionally had very good consultation and support from Highways, and it was only very recently there was a significant lapse, and we would put on record we've had a certain return to the good service we had previously. That's been welcomed. We have an exhibition on lunar engineering in cycle lane started yesterday, and we have been getting information on profit assets, something that we did have previously, but the council went through a period of lapse. So that's been good news. We've certainly seen improvements, particularly in the consultation with colleagues in social services. So I'd like to put on table, because the point I'm going to be concerned about, we've had good constitutions in the past. I do slightly disagree with councillor Richard Kemp. We have had good constitutions. What we haven't always had is the commitment of key players to uphold those constitutions, and I think that's the real problem we've had in the past. And I'd like members and the mayor maybe to reflect on page 229. The Equality Act 2010 has a general duty on the public authorities to eliminate discrimination, harassment and victimisation. Well, I'm going to be honest, there is one outstanding case when one of the lead councillors at the time of the Labour Group condemns someone as being an HIV predator. That case has still not been resolved, and an individual apology does not take away the public outburst and damage. Harassment and victimisation is still not being tackled within this council, and when we see a commitment to do so, then it will have our total support.
Councillor Kemp?
My Lord Mayor, I mentioned earlier that we believe there are three key objectives of the council, and the third was the development of a strong and disciplined management team. I know this plan deals with member development as well, but I'll deal with that quickly and move on to the officer stuff. As councillor Chris Brown has made clear, we're on a long journey, and the words in a plan are nowhere near as important of what's in our hearts and our determination to make change, both in the system and in ourselves. Too few members of this council have been out to see how other councils do things. We judge ourselves by our past as members, and we are yet to have a key performance indicator system in place which enables us to judge ourselves against other councils. We support this plan today. Who wouldn't vote for apple pie and motherhood? But I have concerns about the improvement journey, not that we need a journey, not that we want a journey, but we have a journey that's being foisted on us by the government. So I ask the question, are we doing too much too soon? Or as Eric Morecambe might put it, are we playing the right notes in the right order? Let me take one item from the Improvement Plan. A new neighbourhood model strengthens collaboration between officers, councillors, communities and partners, resulting in co-design services with communities. I absolutely support that. And in fact, my good friends councillor Corbett and councillor Roy Gladon Bula... I'm so keen on him, I can't remember his name. Actually discussed this at some length last week when we were discussing the city plan. But that city plan relates to things within the council, which will need a change in the constitution that we just started. Crucially, it will also need change from all our partners in a city plan of which they have not yet agreed to. If I turn briefly to the officers, my Lord Mayor, we know that there will be a huge change in the officers over the next three to four, five years. I'm not saying that as a threat against officers, that is just as a fact, although I might make exceptions in the case of some senior officers. That is just a fact because we have an ageing workforce. I know that the chief executive, presumably supported by the elected mayor, have real views about the reorganisation that's needed before we can change the officer culture in this city, but that's one that he's not being...
Councillor, can I ask you to bring it...
Forces. So my Lord Mayor, I conclude by saying that we have, in our opinion, a costly improvement plan where we're not doing the right things in the right order, and it's not the fault either of the Labour Party or the officers of this council.
Thank you, councillor. Mayor Joanne?
I'd just like to respond to councillor Radford first of all. When a complaint is not made to your satisfaction doesn't mean the complaint is not being dealt with, and there's been numerous responses to your complaint. I understand you're not happy with the outcome, but that does not mean the complaint is not being dealt with. In terms of us meeting with other local authorities, I regularly meet with other core city leaders. Our whole cabinet has met with Salford Council, could come here for a day. We have mentors from other cities. I know that you have a role within the LGA, and it'd be nice if you brought some of your learning back to us as a council body. You know we're developing KPI indicators as part of the work that Lisa Smith is doing, and that will come back to the Mayor's Select Team. In terms of the neighbourhoods, in terms of the priorities that we have as a council, neighbourhoods and next generation neighbourhoods has been prioritised as one of our actions that started way before the Improvement Plan. The discussion took place much more earlier than what happened last year. And then finally, in terms of the Strategic Improvement Plan, we sat down collaboratively and worked with the Commissioners to identify these overarching goals which other plans will fit into.
Thank you, Mayor Joanne. Shall we carry on? We will now move to the votes. All those in favour? Agreed? Any against? Wonderful, thank you. We're moving on to item 17, A New Deal for Local Government, by councillors Jane Corbett and Tom Cardwell. Can I invite councillor Jane Corbett to move the motion standing in her name?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Move the motion standing in my name and in the name of councillor Tom Cardwell as well, and I reserve my right.
Is the motion seconded? Oh, Tom, you were hiding.
Yes, the motion is seconded.
Are there any further speakers? If so, raise your hand now. No, I'll bring you in in a minute, councillor, and I will call you in turn. What names have gone? Thank you. Before I bring forward the speakers, can I advise that this will be councillor Cardwell's first speech to council? So give him the respect he deserves. Councillor Cardwell?
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. I sit here today seconding this motion, A New Deal for Local Government, as someone who never expected to sit in this chamber. I was born in a ward of this city which is in the top 1% for deprivation, not in the UK but in Europe, and I now represent Speakein Garston Ward, which has the same levels of deprivation as the one I was born in and currently live in. I grew up under Thatcherism, a set of ideological choices made against the best interests of this city. Thatcherism wiped 1.5% off the economy of Liverpool. Many of us remember those days without any nostalgia or joy for them. In the last decade, we've been subject to yet another ideological choice called austerity at the hands of the Tory and Lib Dem coalition. This was a full-on assault on the poorest and most needy and saw massive cuts of approximately 70% to Liverpool City Council's budget, with a further 1.8% wiped off the city's economy. Austerity has disproportionately affected women and children. Child poverty and child malnutrition now scar this country in a way that Dickens would have recognised, but no member of the G7 should tolerate it, let alone choose it. Under the leadership of Mayor Joanne, we're committed to delivering a balanced budget, and rightly so. At the same time, we're also committed to using all of our energy and ingenuity to protect our city and its communities against the worst aspects of austerity. But how can we do that? How can we be expected to make the £34 million in savings that the government require us to make? And let's call it what it is, that's £34 million in cuts. This is levelling down, not levelling up. How can we do it when the government have missed their own deadline for telling us how much money that we have and if their proposed settlement would run for three years or not? The pandemic and its impact on Liverpool have seen these weaknesses sown during the managed decline of Thatcherism and austerity laid bare for all to see. They will now be magnified by the self-imposed decline of Brexit. Our neighbours in Northern Ireland are the only region of the UK to have recovered from Covid. And what the government don't want us to know or think about, and they certainly won't admit, is that remaining in the single market in the customs union have ensured this bounce-back, a bounce-back which will be sadly denied to the citizens of Liverpool. As Thatcherism and austerity were deliberate choices, Brexit is too. However, Brexit, which is a lie, but a lie on an industrial scale, you can't make a truth out of it. Brexit will not work, and it will not improve a single metric for this city or its communities. It will not lift a single person out of poverty. In fact, it will do the absolute opposite. The government's own figures forecast the worst-case scenario of minus 6%, but the government claims that it would be more like minus 2%. But these figures have already been exceeded at a national level, with the Brexit effect decline of 6.8% in the last quarter. Going forward, Brexit will unleash a nuclear winter of austerity almost four times greater than anything we've ever seen before. How do we deal with this decline and the deliberate infected poverty and deprivation? Well, the New Deal for Local Government is essential. It will allow better strategic planning of expenditure and service provision. It will give the city's leadership team some much-needed scope to use their creativity, as we've seen in recent years, in protecting the most vulnerable residents from the worst excesses of these ideological choices. It takes account of the lack of progress in the first funding review, the business rates reset, the social care reform and the levelling up agenda, planning reforms and so much more beside. The lack of commitment to a three-year financial settlement for councils, along with the growing demand for and costs of child and adult social care, the lack of affordable housing, growing homelessness, these are all issues adding to the complex deprivation that all too many residents in my Speakein Garston Ward and many other wards across this city face. Our forebears sat in this chamber over the history of this city, have looked outward across the globe with confidence and belief in the future. They brought forward the world's first commercial wet dock, the world's first passenger railway, the world's first electric railway, the world's first public health officer, and one of the world's first pre-strepped concrete office buildings in the form of the Liver Building. We must challenge government to deliver more than empty words in this levelling up agenda, and this can only be done via a New Deal for Local Government. But also, it will be done by challenging the lack of investment in Liverpool's infrastructure. Even before the recent debacle of the cancelled HS2 Eastern leg, Liverpool was not on the plans with a direct high-speed rail link. This is akin to the Victorians building railways to all the core cities and leaving Liverpool connected to the rest of the country by the canal network. The impact that that has on the investment and growth of our city is not good, it's negative in every way. HS2 is essential not only for connectivity but for the much-needed highly-paid jobs that come with inclusion on HS2, 20,000 jobs and a £15 billion boost to our economy. Inclusion on HS2 would also free up the current West Coast Main Line to take freight off the roads and allow the continued expansion of the Port of Liverpool. It would be a key contributor towards our net zero carbon targets and our commitment to dealing with the climate emergency that we're facing. We must use our finances such as they are to continue the development of our infrastructure. I'm thinking of things like the direct transport link to the airport currently being looked at by the city region. There is also a massive need for grade A office space to house highly-paid jobs that we manage to attract. So basically, in the long-term planning of a New Deal for Local Government, that would allow this council to plan for the much-needed reurbanisation of our city, we must be allowed to build a city that provides education, homes and the much-needed highly-paid jobs that will allow people to stay here and achieve not only their economic potential but also their human potential. I thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. I've got William Shortall.
Thanks, Lord Mayor, Deputy Mayor. Liverpool has seen its capital fund reduced by 65% since 2010, and next year, coxone needed for a further £34 million worth of cuts, 2022. 2022, 2023. Central government funding represents 60% of our total income, and it's vital that it's increased. This pandemic has shown central government that local government is best placed to deliver services that our residents need. It's critical that if the UK government wants to level up, then it's got to pay up, and we in Liverpool, like so many local authorities up north, know what it is to have inequalities. And inequalities aren't just about geographical inequalities, the north-south divide, but it's about inequalities in terms of resources given to disabled people. Often they're given very little or taken away, and as often as not, they're... Often, they're given very little or taken away, and as often as not, they're at the back of their line or the back of the queue when it comes to employment, housing, and education. Levelling up means if nothing. Disabled people are left behind. And my colleague, Tom Cardwell, says people need to reach their economic potential and their human potential, or so do disabled people. And with a triple-lock manifesto commitment, we have motion 22, which is a start. And to conclude, let's see if this government can put their words into financial actions that are sustainable and realistic, and levelled up and pay up. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor. I've got councillor Pat Maloney. Do you wish to speak on this or on the amendments? I'll bring you in now.
Thank you. Right, I listened to the comments made by the previous speakers, Lord Mayor, and I do agree that the budget difficulties are a severe problem for the proper administration of the city and also for the standard and quality of life of our citizens. I'd just like to make a helpful suggestion to try and improve the budget, and that is to collect the section 106 monies, especially from multi-billion-pound developers. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. We'll now move to the amendment by councillor Chris Brown. Can I invite councillor Brown to move the amendments?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just to add to more confusion, I didn't actually plan to move this amendment. I think it was meant to be my colleague councillor McAllister Bell. Therefore, I moved the amendment and reserve my right to speak.
Is the amendment seconded? If you could, please.
This all got confused at the last minute, I'm sure you'll bear with us on this. First of all, could I congratulate councillor Cardwell on his maiden speech? And I want to start by taking you back to those halcyon days of 1975, when I made my first maiden speech in this chamber. I think the elected mayor said she was two at that time during the day, four, I do apologise. And the chief executive was happily playing in the sound that rill. And as I look round, it was quite clear that half this town, half this council wasn't even born. Three months after I was elected, just to show that discrimination against councils isn't stuck in any particular party or parties, the Labour Secretary of State, whose name totally escapes me now, announced that the party is over for local government. And ever since that time, year after year, government after government, administration after administration, the powers of this and every other council to decide the policies it needs and to raise the money to pay for them has been hugely, hugely reduced. Just as an example, for every £100 that we do get from the government now, only about 50 comes into one sustainable chunk which we can apply across the council and we can use and we talk about at our budget meeting in March. The other 50 comes in dribs and drabs we have to apply for, we have to compete for, and there is no coherence. And even when we get the money, it's for one year at a time, which means that we cannot plan long term for some of the problems that we know can't be dealt with in a year, or for that matter, two or three, but need long-term planning. Now, the Labour Party's motion today recognises some of that, but to our mind considerably underplays the financial aspect of the problem. Because the fact is, there will never be a new deal, a new balanced relationship between central and local government, while all the purse strings are held by central government, and they give them out in the piecemeal way I've already spoken about. How we spend the money should be our decision. How we raise the money should be our decision. And above all, my Lord Mayor, we as a core city should remember that we should never be poor, because it's our city that creates the wealth for the city region which dissipates into those other boroughs. So, my Lord Mayor, we can't vote against this motion today, because its heart is in the right place. And I have sought to work with councillor Corbett to strengthen it. We want to improve the money stuff, because if you don't deal with the money properly, then the rest of the motion frankly has little validity and little point.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Brown? You don't want to speak? Okay. So we will now take a vote on the amendments. Oh, councillor Corbett?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So why a new deal for local government? For the simple reason that local government of all sizes now, and all political persuasions and colours, including Tory councils, are standing off and saying to the government, enough is enough, and also saying you cannot go on treating towns, cities, and communities across the country like this. You're damaging the very people you are in government to serve. The Observer article last Sunday mentions councils like Bristol, Lancashire, Nottingham, Cornwall, and ourselves as struggling. And the IFS said earlier this year, local authorities were the biggest losers from government austerity measures. It's now December the 8th, and as councillor Kemp knows, with his links with the LGA, the LGA required us, the government, to make sure that we would get our settlement by the 5th of December. The date at the moment people are banding around is possibly the 15th of December, it may be later than that, and we still don't know whether we'll get a multi-year settlement. And we're meant to then have that money ready to spend in our budget in place from the 1st of April next year. It's an absolute joke. It's so disrespectful from the government towards local government. And if Covid taught us anything, it was how important local government is to the areas that they represent, and we are on the front line. But we can't accept councillor Browns, or Kemp's probably, but anyway, councillor Browns, we're all, well, yeah, okay. Whatever it is. We can't accept your joint amendment, anyway. It doesn't strengthen the motion, it confuses it. I read it through three times. And the last section shows no fighting spirit at all. Just leave it to us to sort it out in our own way. We are not a city that fights, we are a city that fights for justice, we are not a city that gives up and just gives in. We're here to try and force through a new fair deal for local government collectively. And I would appreciate it, actually, if you would just say, okay, we'll vote for this, and it'll be a strong motion for all of us, rather than trying to add weird bits in and out that don't really make any sense. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Corbett. We'll now vote on the amendments. Those in favour of the amendments? Those against the amendments? Are there any abstentions? No? Okay, the amendment is lost. It was 9-4, 52 against, and no abstentions. We'll now move to a vote on the substantive motion. All those in favour? Is that unanimous? Thank you. We now move on to item 18, Local Energy, by councillors Lenysimek, Anne O'Beirne, Laura Robinson-Collins, Elizabeth Hayden, Hetty Wood, and Angela Coleman. Can I invite councillor Lenysimek to move the motion standing in her name, please?
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. So I'd like to move this motion on local energy. Climate crisis is not going away, and how we address the energy question across the country is one of our key issues. We must move to renewables and let go of gas and oil dependency. But in order to be able to move on to renewable energy sources such as wind, solar, or even tidal, and keep fuel costs down, we need to insulate and retrofit all our housing stock. And in order to retrofit the houses, we need green jobs. All of these questions could be addressed at the level of local authorities, and they should be addressed at a local level with appropriate central funding and also enabling legislation. This motion is about a right to local supply for local energy suppliers, such as community organisations and local companies. This motion is a part of a bigger nationwide campaign called Power for People, which is campaigning to get a local electricity bill passed in Parliament, a bill that will remove the high licensing costs of setting up local energy supply provision. At the moment, in order to set up a licensed energy supply company, costs more than £1 million. This is about municipal energy companies and the revival of them. If our local schools have solar panels and are generating energy, for example, at the moment, if they are producing excess energy, they are required by law to partner with a willing licensed energy utility, one in handful of big electricity corporations, rather than sell their electricity directly to local customers. Environmental Audit Committee explains the situation. The ability of communities to sell the energy produced locally is limited in the UK centralised regulatory system, meaning that projects often have to sell energy directly to the grid and then buy it back at additional cost. So the local electricity bill is currently supported by 285 MPs cross-party, and its last discussion on this bill took place in Parliament just on Tuesday 30th of November. At the moment, community renewable energy generation accounts for 0.5 of UK electricity. It is projected it would increase tenfold in five years and twentyfold in 10 years if the energy business model was viable. And all this would, of course, save 1.5 tonnes of CO2 emissions each year. Local energy markets would also create local economic resilience communities across the country, and there's the potential for running municipal energy companies and investing the revenues into parks, swimming pools, libraries, and so on. So this is about municipal energy revolution. Four Liverpool MPs support the bill. I call on to you here to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Is the motion seconded? Thanks, councillor O'Beirne. Do you want to speak now?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, if we're truly to take the climate catastrophe seriously, we must ensure that every country, whether that's developed, emerging, or developing, is engaged and involved. In 2019, this city, along with other cities worldwide, declared a climate emergency. Since then, we've seen cities such as Amsterdam to Seattle, Paris to Sao Paulo, taking this change to their cities and to protect their citizens and the nature. The issue of loss and damage from climate catastrophe will hit developing countries and the poorest around the world, as well as cities such as our own, hardest. This unfortunately has not been addressed by the richest in our society, as well as Western governments. Another example, and very relevant, is the vaccine nationalism that's leaving just 2% of the population of developing countries vaccinated. This is an appalling act of moral shame and also an act of self-harm on behalf of the developed world. When trust between developing and developed countries is key to success, and we need to persuade others to step up onto climate finance, the Tories took the disastrous decision to cut the aid budget, the only G7 country to do so. If the Tories are truly serious about restoring some of our standing in the world, they would reinstate our overseas aid commitments. The UK may be only 1% of global emissions, but according to Carbon Tracker, the investments of companies and financial institutions based in the city of London account for approximately 15% of global emissions. Financial institutions must, as laid down in the 2021 Glasgow Pact, play their part fully in tackling the depth of inequalities when it comes to climate financing and climate building funds to develop resilience in developing countries. Lord Mayor, we export our emissions often onto developing and emerging countries. This contract has to be called out and stopped. Nature is essential to both quality of life and our responsibility to future generations and to cutting emissions. We can and must build a better world. Protecting nature and biodiversity is absolutely essential to this. If we really want to engage individuals and communities in the fight against the climate crisis, then the nature agenda must be absolutely central to this. That's why we should be protecting nature and ensuring that all climate migration and adaptations is nature-positive. And this is where we start, by setting an example in our own part of the world. Our city is one of the least greenest in the UK. We have an aging stock of trees concentrated predominantly in the south and east of the city. By greening our neighbourhoods, study after study has shown that we increase the life chances of young, improve the wellbeing of our older generations, and reduce crime and antisocial behaviour. By making tarmac green, by building pocket parks, for instance, we give nature a fighting chance to thrive. Transforming our homes can't be done without significant government support, but it's essential in reducing our dependence on fossil fuels. Installation of our homes helps lift our poorest communities out of fuel poverty. Our city can and must do more. I will finish now, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, we've seen that the Labour government has called for massive investment in climate change, and we've got a genuine opportunity to make a significant difference to our environment, to our economy, and to our communities, and to lead the way in Liverpool and across the country. I hope that you'll support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I've had notification that councillor Alan Tormey wishes to address full council in relation to the motion. Are there any further speakers? If so, please raise your hand clearly now, and I will call you in turn. Right, thank you, councillor Alan Tormey.
Thank you, everybody there. Yeah, basically, I'm supporting this motion, but I've got a few concerns that will need to be worked on as an overall. Recently, as we all know, the wholesale gas and electricity market, the prices have gone through the roof. Last week, my provider actually went into the administration, which was a green provider, but now being took over by Shell, which we all know here is a petroleum company in Italy, so they're going green, but we'll see. Basically, you mentioned a few things there. We've got issues recently with, when I spoke to the Secretary of State for Business Energy and Industrial Strategy regarding the prepayment system within the city, when it changed the minimum top-ups, went from pay point to pay zone. So when we look at this local energy, we'll need to review the pricing strategy to ensure that the prepayment meter usage, which is extremely high in this city, is addressed on that one there. I also have some concerns that in the last four years, three UK councils have lost £75 million on energy-owned companies, Robinhood, for example, Victoria Energy, and BE 2020. Now, I do hope that the law is changed with the rights of the local supplier, which you mentioned. If that changes, hopefully that will address that moving forward. But this is a worrying concern that three councils have done this and lost £75 million, and we're currently staring at a deficit. and we're currently staring at a deficit. Will the energy market survive the next 12 months? We don't know. However, the positive for this motion is that we do have an abundance of local knowledge in this area. And we do, as a council here, understand our community needs and the renewable energy products, the projects that we're already currently working on. So this could potentially be a unique chance for Liverpool here to create a successful supply business that could be directly linked to local green energy for the communities that we're all looking after here. But we do need to really address the fact that we are staring down a barrel there of high fuel poverty and low energy efficiency across the city. For us to achieve our carbon neutral goals, we have to retrofit 14,000 homes per year, which is going to be extremely difficult. But in all honesty, this is a good idea, and I fully support it, but it will need to be worked on with the council offices and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Monby?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. I only wanted to comment because of councillor's comments about local energy companies, and I think it might be worth just spelling out to councillors what's been going on there. You may recall, some of you, when I was in the Cabinet, I helped set up a Liverpool Leckie as a local energy company. There are three different kinds of local energy companies. Liverpool Leckie was what's called a me-too. We just literally branded ourselves on Robinhood. So you'll be pleased to know, if you didn't know, that when Robinhood went, it didn't cost us a penny, right? There was always a risk with local council energy companies, which were essentially relying on buying on the spot market. When energy prices were going down, they could compete successfully with big companies that were locked into long-term contracts and actually undercut them. The problem was, when energy prices started to go up again, they couldn't compete with the big companies, and they started to accrue debts. That's why I think it's important, given that negative experience, that they were winners for a bit and then they ended up losers, that it's much more important to look at local energy generation rather than companies buying in the spot market. I just wanted to make that point because it is important to understand the distinction and why this motion is correct, that I think we should focus on ways to invest in generating energy from our buildings. Your best one is supported, sir.
Thank you, councillor. We now move to the amendment by councillor Steph Pitches. Can I invite the councillor to move the amendment standing in her name, please? And also that this will be her fair speech to council, so please respect again.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As a Green, I absolutely welcome local energy in principle. When you decentralise energy, when you produce it locally, it's far more efficient. You lose a lot less energy, and it would work to the benefit of local people. And indeed, Caroline Lucas was one of the authors of the Local Electricity Act 2018, and we fully support the bill. However, we do need to look at the local context. As councillor Tormey mentioned, at the moment, the energy crisis is upon us. A quote from the website Money Saving Expert says, "The energy market is in turmoil. Wholesale prices are at unprecedented highs, and 20 energy firms have failed since the beginning of September." This is due to a massive increase in gas prices. And it may come as a surprise to some of you that a lot of UK electricity is actually powered by gas. Now, taking this into consideration and the current energy market, I fear that a lot of investors would be very reluctant to put any money into the energy sector, and it would be very difficult to set up a local energy company at present. However, we do recognise that investment in renewables is vital in our aim for net zero emissions. And we need to move away from our reliance on gas. The local impact that the energy crisis is having on local residents is that, on average, it's costing people in their homes £139 more a year to heat and light their homes. We have a city where there were a lot of people who faced fuel poverty issues before the energy crisis, and this is only going to make things worse. A lot of this is, of course, linked to inadequate housing stock, as councillor Simic mentioned. We need to improve our housing. And indeed, Mayor Joanne, I welcome that you are also campaigning to retrofit homes and to insulate houses, and that is something that we need in our city in order for people to stay healthy, but also to reduce energy emissions. Now, as a council, we are well placed to take responsibility. We must be proactive to find real, workable solutions. And for this reason, I urge you to vote for the following amendments. Firstly, we would like to add H onto the motion, which would be to work with partners and stakeholders in the city to identify all the opportunities for increasing use of renewable energy across the council's estate and implementing energy-saving measures where appropriate, and also to collaborate with all organisations involved in tackling fuel poverty in the city in identifying those at most risk and providing assistance where possible. Thank you.
Well done. Is the amendment seconded? Thank you. Lenny, do you want to respond?
Yes, absolutely. We accept the amendment. And yeah, we absolutely believe that actually we do need to work with stakeholders in the city, which there is a bit in the actual motion that says that already. But I think, you know, we all have to work cross-party to help get us to local energy and to net zero. So it's all of our responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So now the vote will be adding that to the substantive motion. All those in favour? Unanimous? So now we vote on the substantive motion? Unanimous? Thank you. We're now moving to item 19, Updating the Long Term Plan for the City, by councillor Richard Kemp. Can I invite councillor Kemp to move the motion, standing in his name, please?
My Lord Mayor, this is the third element of the discussions that I've said would run as a golden thread, or at least a yellow thread through our contributions today. At the last meeting, we did have what couldn't possibly be called a debate about the city plan. It consisted largely of seven cabinet members making a two-minute speech, and for some reason, some councillors having a go at me, but I'd gone to the loo, so I wasn't quite sure what that was about. My Lord Mayor, I think that this council is doing things in absolutely the wrong order. There is a need for a big city plan for this city as a whole. And that is our job, our job as an elected mayor and 90 elected councillors, to provide that. It's our job, having discussed this with the electors and being given various authority within this council chamber to proceed, to promote that long-term vision of where we want our city to be in 10 to 15 years' time. That is not what has happened in this city. There were some discussions between four and three years ago about what that should be, and there was at that time a city plan produced. But since then, we have had the coronavirus, which is affecting many things. And in particular, we refer in this motion to what's happening in the Debenhams store, because there will be huge changes to the way our city, district and neighbourhood centres work. We've had Brexit, which, as has been said before, I think by councillor Cardwell, will have really bad effects on this country and this city. And hopefully, as a result of COP26, there will be far more people with a realisation of the environmental challenges which this city and this country face. All those took place before the city plan was produced. And we are now producing a council plan to deliver our part of a city plan, which is therefore out of date. I refer again to the whole concept of neighbourhoods, which is slightly alluded to within the city plan as exist, but is clearly going to be a major part of what the council plan will consist of. But we cannot deliver a neighbourhood strategy alone. At the very least, it involves the police, the housing associations, the NHS and the voluntary sector to actually deliver anything that could be considered as a neighbourhood plan for this city. So I know it amuses some, but I want to reassert the democratic rights and responsibilities of the members of this council to decide the vision and strategy. I want to see, as do my colleagues, a new approach, to go out now to consult on those big visions, those big strategies. I want this council to decide what that should look like. And then I want our officers and our mayor and our cabinet members, and in fact, all of us in one way or another, to go out and show our partners why they should be supporting that coherent strategy which starts in this chamber, which is the only part of the public sector in this city, which actually has the mandate to decide what the long-term future should be, which is the only part of the public sector in this city, which can then pull together all the other partners into a coherent whole to deliver as one public sector united body, wherever we can do within our legal constraints to deliver what this city needs. It's our job to go and consult with the people. It's our job to deliver what the people want to all the partners of this city to make sure that we make best value and best use of their money, their abilities and their direction. My Lord Mayor, I move.
Well done, councillor. Is the motion seconded? Do you wish to speak on the motion? Are there any further speakers on that part of the motion? We'll now turn to the two amendments. The first amendment by councillor Jane Corbett. Can I invite councillor Corbett to move the amendment, standing in her name, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Move the amendment, standing in my name. Do you want me to speak to it now? Yeah? Yep, okay. Slightly confusing there, councillor Kemp, because it talks about our plan, but then we want to work in partnership. If you remember, the city plan emerged from the updating of the Inclusive Growth Plan in 2017 to become a partnership plan with the engagement of over 100 stakeholders, including businesses, charities, cultural organisations, schools, the healthcare sector, the police, along with City Safe Board, Liverpool Health and Wellbeing Board, which you're on, like I'm on, and so provide a long-term shared vision with six aims. And those six aims that we use, we use them regularly. The title of the old Inclusive Growth Plan was, if you remember, "A Strong and Growing City Built on Fairness", and this one is, "Our vision for Liverpool is a thriving, sustainable, fair city for everyone." So move from one to the other. Both Brexit and Covid have created new ways of thinking, brought new opportunities and identified new risks, as you said, for the city as well as for the country. I welcome the work carried out in June 2020, prior to the approval by Cabinet in August 2020, to review the draft city plan in the light of the known impacts of Covid-19, with evidence provided from the council's recovery groups and by partners and networks from across the city. I also recognise the work of the chief executive officers of 11 of the city's largest private, public and voluntary sector organisations in formally approving a city plan through their governance structures, enabling the plan then to be formally launched online in October 2021, and their ongoing commitment to the overall vision and six aims within the plan. I also welcome the work being carried out at the moment to review the plan, its governance and its delivery mechanisms, and the set of draft recommendations which will be drawn up following that work by the end of this current financial year. And I know the chief executive and the mayor will be ensuring that the outcomes of that review and the draft recommendations are shared not only with the partners and stakeholders, but be taken to the relevant select committees for pre-scrutiny and discussed alongside and then in the context of the Emerging Council Plan and Strategic Improvement Plan. They all weave in together. Move the amendment, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Is the first amendment seconded? Councillor Lake, thank you. Do you wish to speak on it? Are there any other speakers on the first amendment? No, we will now take a vote on the first amendment. Try saying that late in the evening. On the first amendment. All those in favour? All those against? Are there any abstentions? Right, so that was 45 for, 11 against, no abstentions. So that was carried, but we still move on to the second amendment by councillor Tom Crowe. Can I invite councillor Crowe to move the amendment, standing in his name, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's a short amendment, so I'll just briefly read it out so people will know exactly what it is I'm proposing. Essentially, it did say delete everything after the number bullet point three, but Jane's added a few extra bullet points in there, so that should now be six. Delete everything after that and just replace it quite simply with, "Council believes that the rapidly escalating global climate crisis should form the basis of all of the council's medium-term and long-term plans, including the city plan. Council urgently instructs the mayor, cabinet, chief executive and senior management team to review all such plans and strategies, incorporating best practice from the LGA and councils across the country who are seeking root and branch solutions to tackle the crisis." Now, that is an approach to running the council that we are going to need if we are going to seriously address our responsibilities to future generations and tackle the climate crisis. We've committed to getting to zero carbon by 2030. That was two and a half years ago. We made that commitment. Very little has changed in that time, so we really need to focus our minds on delivering that really, really important pledge for future generations. On the other hand, the Labour amendment that we've just voted through has the actions... "Council therefore request the chief executive..." "Council therefore requests the chief executive ensures the outcome of the review and draft recommendations relating to the city plan be shared with partners and stakeholders and submitted to the relevant select committees for some scrutiny in the context of the emergent council plan and the council strategic improvement plan." Can I just ask the chief executive, was any of that not going to happen anyway? Have we actually just voted for anything to happen? It's just such a wasted opportunity. I mean, I believe we should just replace all the text that we've just agreed with what I've just read out. The original motion itself, I didn't dislike. It had a list of six bullet points, all of which are mostly focusing on environmental issues that I completely support, but any list of selected bullet points about environmental improvements we should make, however nice it is, it'll always be incomplete. We need to take this as a root and branch issue, we need to take it as a fundamental guiding principle and that's why my much more succinct and better amendment should be voted through by this council. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Is the second amendment seconded? Thank you. We'll now move to a vote on the second amendments. So for the second amendment, it was 411 against 47, no abstentions, so that was lost. So we now vote on the substantive motion as amended. All those in favour? Is that unanimous? Excellent, thank you. Cross-party motions. Can I invite councillor Ruth Bennett to move a recommendation in relation to those motions included on the agenda and proposed for cross-party approval without debate?
Can I move that the motions listed as items 20 to 26 on the agenda be approved on a cross-party basis without debate?
Is that agreed? Can I, can I invite councillor Ruth Bennett to move a recommendation in relation to those motions included on the agenda but not approved for debate?
Can I move that the motions listed as items 27 to 30 on the agenda be referred to the relevant regulatory or select committee as indicated on the Lord Mayor's note?
Is that agreed?
Read.
Oh, you are wonderful. That is the end of the meeting.
Thank you Lord Mayor. I do hope, I'm a new councillor as you all know, and this wasn't exactly what I signed up for. I do hope we won't be meeting, I do hope chief executive, you're confused, let me help with your confusion. I do hope we don't meet again in such ridiculous circumstances whereby members, including myself, have to sit here in a hat, a coat, thermal underwear, just to keep warm. Just to keep warm.
We've heard you councillor, the me-
Point of order. No point of order. Can we insist, please, that members wear masks? If they don't wear masks, can we insist that at least when they cough, they cover their mouths? The biggest culprit in that has left the chamber, who was sat there, who coughed throughout the meeting without even putting his hand over his mouth. That's it, Lord Mayor, but I'm sorry that everyone thinks it's so funny.
All right, thank you councillor.